Hello, I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Mark Fiorentino is online, but I am hosting here in the meeting room. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance, if you please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item would be minutes from the previous meeting.
Make the motion to approve the minutes from the September 2 meeting.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Any comments or additions? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Mark, you're online. It's there, right?
Yes.
Okay. Minutes are approved. We have no appointments tonight under communications, we're going to look over the work plans. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Briefly for the community, I encourage everybody, this is a once a year task that the town completes. Shortly after the budget is approved by voters, that would be in April, and this is on an annual basis, each department head, that's the police chief, that's the parking rec, that's community development, that's Public Works, they are asked to prepare a work plan of departmental initiatives over and above the day-to-day things that they do, so that they can explain to us how they will use the approved funding that the voters put into place through the budget approval process. The contents of each work plan then becomes an ongoing discussion between me and each department head at their monthly one-on-one meeting, and that enables me, on behalf of the town, to track their actual results against the plan. The work plan focuses on things over and above the daily operations, and the overarching goal is to move the town forward. As I mentioned in this document, and again, it's part of the package for the Board of Selectmen tonight, but also the drummer will be producing it in a future issue. The intent is to constantly review these annual work plans to introduce resiliency, redundancy, and efficiency into the operation. I will briefly, there's a number of things, it could be anywhere from five to 15 things. Each department head has passed along, I've consolidated them into one document. And while there's a number of things coming out of the town manager's office, one of the things that you'll see tonight is we worked closely to create a 10-year capital plan so that we can work on capital funding, and if it's approved tonight, that will move to CPAC. Human Resources, one of their key things is to provide employees with the required training, including our newly appointed supervisors. In community development, Abby and her team will be working closely with planning and zoning for the Plan of Conservation and Development, which is a 10-year update. An example of something that Kimmy is working on over and above all the things that she does was to oversee the implementation of ClearGov software, not for the budget, which was done last year in conjunction with Betsy, but this year to see how that folds into the capital process. John Lambert has his hands full, and IT will continue to be vigilant on cybersecurity threats and defense strategies. Unfortunately, we are a target, every municipality, every governmental entity is a target, so cybersecurity threats, we take very seriously. The Police Department, among other things, will work cooperatively with the Board of Education to create a School Resource Officer Program. Public Works, we've recently separated operations from capital projects, we promised to do that a year ago, and now that the supervisors have had a year under their belt to get acclimated to their positions, Kirk has been moved exclusively to capital projects. Over in the library, they continue to plan for the future of the library identifying space needs. In Human Services, Youth Services, Parks and Recreation, Senior, and Social, they will be having a 25th anniversary celebration this coming year. And finally, the town clerk is working on a best practices for boards and commissions. These are just a single example of each department, and as I said, each one has between five and 15 different initiatives. I think the community would find it advantageous to understand what we do, how we do it, and I would encourage everybody to head out and read that document. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mike. Town manager. Mark, do you have any comments you wanted to add?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. No, I would just thank the team for putting together, that's another example of us trying to be more detailed and thoughtful about setting specific goals and objectives year by year, and I'm grateful for the team doing it. I don't have any questions, I'm going to think it looks pretty good.
Thank you. On the, in the room, Hank, did you have any comments?
No questions.
Not for me.
I didn't have any comments either.
Thank you.
Thanks for preparing that summary, Mike. And we can move on to the capital plan now.
I'll provide a brief introduction. So we, this is also a relatively new document, under Mark Fiorentino, when he was acting as the town manager. He worked on, starting in 2023, the creation of a single document. The charter calls for one capital plan that includes town priorities and board priorities. If you recall, that was pulled together and came before you sometime in mid-May, the priorities of the town were the sewer pump infrastructure replacement, continuing bridge replacement, rolling stock, Granby Ambulance's second ambulance replacement, the road improvement program, and then a public library expansion discussion. The Board of Education's priorities at the time were district safety and security, the turf and track field replacement, and then the Granby Memorial Middle School renovation. So tonight, we are pleased to send to you one document, it's a fairly expansive, one-place-to-look list. We had a number of questions when we came in May, the board went back to the drawing board, and Chris DeGray did a nice job. I believe we have Sherry Burke from the Board of Education, in the event that there are any questions, when we get to the document, Sherry will handle those, I will handle them from the town. But some things that we have done since we were here in May is the Board of Education has reworked both their, where their items fall in the priority and the amounts of their items. The town has reworked a number of things, we have included Holcomb Farm siding, we have included the Cosette Historical Building Needs Report, that's a two-page summary, that dovetails with the document Mark Fiorentino passed along from Ms. Susan Warner, and that relates to the work over time that is needed at Cosette. That has incorporated both some individual line items and in total. There is also an August 14 memo from Parks and Recreation Board Chair Anthony McGovern, identifying the capital priorities of the Park and Rec Board as it relates to the GZA Parks Master Plan. All master plan items are in there, and the priorities, those that are advanced in terms of a more sooner need, are included there. And finally, we also included the July 16 transmittal of the Master Park Study. So ladies and gentlemen of the board, those that are in the community, I believe you have one document, I encourage, you know, a healthy discussion and ultimately referral to CPAC, and I believe this document is a launching point and should be an equal discussion as to the town's operating budget, when the plus one gets to you in November, and also what eventually goes to the community for approval in April with respect to the operating budget. There should be a robust conversation of equal parts on both. While nothing is set in stone, and CPAC can reshuffle the priorities, reshuffle the amounts, we are looking to eventually set aside some priorities for bonding. It's possible that bonding could occur, meaning a request to voters in June of 2026, but that is all subject to the process that is in front of us, and how CPAC works through the priorities and makes recommendations. If we don't do it in June of '26, it will move to probably June of '27, but those are loose timeframes, and I'm certainly willing to take any questions you may have on the actual documents.
Thank you for that summary and for compiling, all in one place, a substantial list of our capital needs for the town. As you indicated, Mark Fiorentino, take this off, I'll give him an opportunity to comment on the list as it stands tonight. Mark?
Thank you, Mark. First, I want to thank everybody, the superintendent and Mike and everybody working together to get this to the stage it's at, and I think it's in great shape for us to take to CPAC and start to vet these. I do have some questions, do you want to go through them one page at a time, or do you want to, this, how do you want me to go through them?
Why don't you step through, sorry, if you can't summarize them as general items, why don't you step through by page?
Okay, so just, I think they'll go quickly. So my first questions are on page one, it's lines nine and 13, which both relate to sidewalks. I think, Mike, unless I'm mistaken, these are new from our last iteration, and I understand what they are, I just wanted to make it clear that neither of these are final recommendations, the Town Center study isn't to the point yet where we've scoped out dollar numbers, so I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding that right, that's just an estimate I presume Abby developed?
You are correct. Number one, the items 202609 and 2026013 are duplicates, there was an initial calculation of about 250,000 to connect from the Route 20 parking lot back to Town Hall, that is in the Plan of Conservation and Development, the last iteration, whether it comes out of this iteration is another question. Recently, Abby has asked Kevin Clark, our town engineer, to price that out, and he came out with 120, so those two items are duplicates, one can go, but it will ultimately, as you said, it's from the last Plan of Conservation and Development, not the one that is underway right now, and it is simply a placeholder at the moment until we really decide what the priority is and how far out it should be, if it should even be on the list.
All right, thank you, so I support that, yes, again, I think we've tried to get as comprehensive a list as we can, so I support it being on there, so it's part of the overall discussions. My next questions are really just one or two, that they're all on page nine. So my first question is line 503 and 514, both relate to the bathroom? Are those two different projects, or?
Yes, they are different projects, so let me take a step back before I answer the questions for the Board of Selectmen that are sitting here looking at it and the viewing public who perhaps has a copy in front of them or may ultimately go to take a look at it. The purpose of this document is really to focus most of our attention on the first fiscal year that is coming up, in this particular case, it's fiscal year '27. Those are the things that are the priorities that we should spend a lot of time on. Fiscal year '28, we'll probably spend a little less time on, fiscal year '29, even less, and then '30, '31, '32, '33, even less. So this gives you a visual of what we believe the priorities are with the focus on the first column, if you will. Our estimate confidence is always good, and our Board of Finance Chair Kevin had asked us to, there's been a history of estimates coming in perhaps lower than they should have, they were either stale and so forth, so this allows us to say, hey, what did we do in terms of the estimate confidence? And then other funding was also a column that Kevin had asked us to add. In the case of, say, on page one, the bridges, there's a substantial amount of money that comes from the state of Connecticut, either 50%, 80%, or 100% state funding. In most cases, the funding is not in this document, it just says there's funding to go out and secure, so if CPAC were to recommend it, the Board of Selectmen were to approve it, we would ultimately move to, move the total dollar amount to the net cost after adjusting for grants, but what you see here is everything on a gross basis. Now to page nine, to your question, we have existing bathrooms, so 2026503 are really the existing bathrooms at Salmon Brook Park, and those would be subject to a renovation, the bath house near the pond, for example, and then the existing freestanding porta potty, I guess is what you would call it, and the bathroom inside, can we somehow make those more accessible to the residents who may be using Salmon Brook Park or the walking path without really upsetting the apple cart? The Master Parks Plan, which is 2026514, had recommended a restroom further away, somewhat near the Rovers Field. We do not have power out that far, we do not have plumbing out that far, and a number of things would have to be taken into account. So to renovate our existing bathroom, we think is closer to the tune of about 100,000, to add another bathroom, it could be substantially more as we have to get utilities out there. So yes, two separate projects, two separate estimates, and the very large estimate out to '34, '36 really would need to be refined if that were a priority over the coming years, number one, to skinny that number down, but it provides for a number of contingencies because we simply don't have the infrastructure to support a freestanding bathroom out there easily.
Well, thank you for that, I think it answers the rest of my questions, so, but I wanted just to ask it just to make sure I understand it right, so if you go down the next, a lot of the following lines are all related to the Parks Master Plan, and so, for example, when we get to 517, which is the relocation of ball fields, that, if I recall correctly, was the third and fourth priority of the, recommended by the Park and Rec Board, but the reason it's so far out is because we're going to focus on the first few lines, which were the first one and, first and second priorities, right?
You are correct, and, so, a couple of comments on the master plan, you will see starting items 2026514 all the way down to 2026530, that really lists every item in the master plan that GZA identified, and there are broad brushstrokes as to the amount. So no one should really panic when, you know, the restroom comes in at $1 million, and the skate park comes in at $1 million. That simply means, depending on how we want to do it, those are large capital items that would probably require some form of bonding, and they're in the plan, out quite a few years, we simply want to consider them, but you're correct, Mark, the two items, there were several items, but the two, we have limited staff, we have limited ability to pay, knowing what the other priorities are, if we were able to get to the Route 20 path to the soccer fields, which has already been complemented by a State of Connecticut steep grant, and we were to get to pickleball courts and the relocation of lacrosse fields, we would have our hands full for the next several years. So simply due to limited funding and limited ability to handle these projects, the top two are at the top, everything else is several years out. You're correct.
Thank you. The rest of my questions are on the BOE, there's only a couple of portions of the plan, and the first one's around just on page 12. And Mike, I know you've worked on these, so you can probably answer them, or the superintendent can. So just the Ford F350s, those are proud vehicles, right?
I'm going to defer to the superintendent.
Yes, that's correct, Mark.
Okay, and it, so it looks like we have, do we have three of those total, and there's like a rolling schedule to replace them?
So we have an implemented rolling schedule now, and then that would continue, we've just moved it to the 10-year plan.
Okay, so this is no new vehicles?
That's correct, it's just replacement of our current fleet as they age.
My next question's on page 13, which is just related to the track and steel, I know we've been talking about this for a long time, I thought when Chris talked to us, that we talked a little bit about that number may be able to be adjusted a little based on some testing results, so the number that's in there now, the Ford fleet, is still the best number we have based on the tests we did?
So we did additional testing this summer, that's correct, there were a large number, I will misquote, but I try to give you the exact number, I want to say 35 or so, additional bore holes across select locations of the fields, because our initial quotes were based on only really the area where we could already see the damage was starting to happen. The additional holes, Chris DeGray has prepared a full report that will go to CPAC at our first meeting, but essentially, it was good news, there's some of the same degree in other areas, but not as deep as we had initially thought, and so we don't believe we'll have to go down the full depth of 10 feet to excavate the soil that's currently there, looking more like five in the vast majority of the area, which will save some dollars, but we do not yet have a final quote, that's all being taken care of that. So 4 million is the top, but I'm optimistic it will be coming in below that.
Okay, thank you. My next question is on, just on the next page, and it's really the first line, so the second line, 701, I think I fully understand, Chris explained that in detail, but let me discuss this the first time, 3.1 million matches up to the study we did on what's needed to get the middle school up to current code, that's not the right term, but, so my first question is, so what's the difference between the second line and the first line?
So, Mark, I apologize that I'm in my car zooming in, and I don't have both the documents, I'm not driving, but I don't have the ability to do both, can you let me know what that initial line is, and then I can certainly do my best?
Yeah, so the first line says renovate a new 20 million, and the second line is renovate in kind, which is, that's all we're discussing.
Exactly, so those are drastically different numbers, and that's because the $3 million is a visual assessment, the visual assessment's a team that walked through the facility, and only really identified items that they could easily see without any getting under the hood, so to speak, or additional testing, going off of the age of HVAC system, age of, you know, sprinkler system mechanicals, things that our grandfather didn't get on currently code, to get the exact same middle school that we have right now, even to the point if some tiles are broken, which we do have, of course, in the hallways or the stairwells, it's a replace of the same or very similar size, shape, color, quality. So we know that once we get into a deeper layer of assessment, much like Chris DeGray always explains it as, you know, you bring your car in for a noise, and they say, I think it's this, but then once they dig into it, you know, they can find a number of things that are now necessary. So that 3 million is based on a very early assessment to get the ball rolling, based on current market value and what we think a school of 2030, as an example, would look like, we put a placeholder for that additional price point of 21 million. We, the next step for the Board of Ed is to do, to get an architect on staff and really go through the school with a deeper look, and at this point, we haven't had the funding to be able to do that type of an assessment just yet, so we went with what we had readily available, which was the visual assessment.
Okay, and then this last question, this page probably isn't fair for you, because there's just a lot of detail, and again, maybe Mike, you can answer this question, because I know you've worked with Chris on this, so if you just start, for example, on 715, 716, the HVAC replacements, I was surprised to see separate numbers for those, because I thought those were part of the 3.1 million dollar study.
No, they're not, as a matter of fact, we just had one rooftop unit go offline, which we're having to replace right now, so things like rooftop units, we've had a replacement cycle all along, and they've been installed at different, you know, timelines, without the numbers in front of me, it's harder for me to speak to it with specificity, but those are separate from the 3 million dollars.
Okay, and then my last question, thank you superintendent, it's just on the last page, so it's item 60, I'm sorry, 801, which is the roof replacement of Wells Road, we have 100,000 in fiscal year '27, and 2.8 million in fiscal year '28, so two questions, why two lines in two years? And then the second question is, I didn't realize that the roof on Wells was as critical as this shows, I thought it was further out.
So I don't have an answer for that, Mike has got it in front of me, can you share anything, or I can certainly get back to you with a more specific answer?
Yeah, the, I do understand why there's 100,000 in '27, that's so an architect...
As in as the repair?
Well, it could be the repair, I believe it's the architect and the engineer designing the roof that will ultimately be put out to bid, and then the 2.8 million represents the contractor cost.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to speak to it without that information at hand, I'm sorry, Mark.
That's okay, but the roof is at, what are they, 30-year?
Uh huh.
And so it's at the end of the year?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And recognize, Mark, and Sherry, and those that are listening in the public and the rest of the Board of Selectmen, the Town of Granby for renovation projects on our Board of Education receives approximately 36% from the state of Connecticut, there is a long lead time, so for instance, if we lock down tomorrow, what Board of Education facilities we wanted to renovate, that would go in an April 2026 bonding bill at the earliest, and we would be given the okay to put it in front of voters after that. So we have to carefully time what we decide our priorities are, what we ask the state to do, get the state's approval, put it in front of our voters for the local share, so there's definitely a, somewhat of a chicken and the egg going on here with respect to what we can do for the Board of Ed using some state dollars.
All right, I appreciate that, thank you very much, I want to repeat what I started with, I really appreciate the work that both of you did between the last time you looked at it and this, I think this is a much tighter and a much better starting point for CPAC, so I'm very grateful for that, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
That's all I had, you can...
Thank you, Mark. Now, in the chamber, any questions, I'll start with you, Fred.
No, thank you for putting it all together in one spreadsheet and making me wear my glasses to read the spreadsheet. Just a quick, you know, refresher, the high school main gym, those bleachers were in the previous budget, right? They're not listed here, so I'm assuming they were already...
Sherry, over the summer, those bleachers, you did that out of small cap, and they were the original bleachers, and we're talking the high school now?
Yeah, high school gym.
I believe the superintendent dropped?
That's okay.
So, yes, that's the answer to the question, we did them over the summer.
That's what I thought, okay, that's it for me.
Kelly?
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
Couple of questions.
Couple of questions. On the Doertie Bridge, I believe we have, is there just one house on that street? Or there are more, multiple building lots?
That I do not know.
Yes, there's just one residence on Doertie Road.
So is that one that we would get significant state funding for? I'm just wondering, I mean, it's a big, it's a big cost.
I believe it is a 50-50. I believe our cost is somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.1 and the state is putting in 1.1. So the overall replacement's about 2.2 to 2.4 million before we bet it. Those are the engineering estimates.
Just a big number for?
A small bridge.
A small, a small bridge and, yeah. Okay. The other question I had is, will CPAC like establish a policy for a threshold for the capital plan versus small cap? Because it seems like we don't really have a consistent number.
So one of the first actions that CPAC took, they certainly considered it, whether or not they voted on it, I don't recall, is there's a delineation of 250,000. Anything 250,000 or less goes to small cap. Anything 250,000 or more goes into large bonding projects. There's a substantial amount of money that Granby puts aside each and every year. To give you an idea, our debt service is about 1.8 million on bonds. That's about 600,000, give or take, for three separate bond initiatives. Put that money aside, there's another approximately 2.8 million that goes to small cap. That is roughly split between 1.8 million on the town side and about 1.1 million on the board side. If you focus just on the board side, the 1.1 million is split between leases, which I'm encouraging both sides to get out of the discussion because once you commit a lease, you're paying somebody. We can't spend that money again. That's somewhere in the neighborhood of 400,000 or 500,000 of that 1.1 million. So really what the board has on an annual basis is about 600,000, give or take, to spend on small capital items. They have been putting aside big chunks of money for their security system. And they had a surplus this year, which was, again, an accomplishment on their part as they managed a very difficult special education budget. So they have in the neighborhood of 800,000 to 900,000 put aside on what ostensibly could be about a $1.2 million safety and security initiative. So 250, we can set aside and less. We can set aside a small cap and then their annual allocation will move against those items. On the town side, it's about 1.8 million, but 1 to 1.1 million of the 1.8 is set aside in cash for roads. So the roads you see Peterson Canal that are getting done, that's the 1.1 allocation that comes every July 1st. That leaves about 700,000. And about half of that goes to leases as well for a piece of a capital equipment. A single truck for the parks, for the board, for the Public Works Department is about 350,000. So we basically get one large piece of equipment every year. Our fleet is in good, good shape. And then there's about 300,000 that we allocate to other places. For instance, storage needs and Salmon Brook Park and so forth. So I encourage this document, again, to become a prominent discussion point in addition to the capital, in addition to the operating budget, since there's a considerable amount of money, 1.8 million in debt service, 2.8 million for town and board small cap items. And then what's in here that's over 250 will be considered for permanent bonding. So hopefully that explained where the situation is. We do not have an unlimited supply, but between patients and small cap, we can get a considerable amount of things done. And then every seventh year, we take on larger projects. I would imagine, although Mike Guarco and his Board of Finance will size this, you're probably looking at, you know, somewhere between a 10 and 13 million dollar bond next year after the voters approve it in 2026. Perhaps the bonds would be issued as, as early as fall of '26 or the spring of '27.
So is, what was the intent of having, you know, some of like the $15,000 items in here, just to package them up as part of the bonding?
No, small cap.
Okay, so this includes both the small cap and the large?
You are correct. When the funding source is determined, so after the Board of Selectmen hopefully sends it to CPAC, CPAC decides it, the funding source would be filled in as part of the upcoming budget. It might say leasing, it might say small cap, it might say bonding, it might say LOSEP, it might say state grant. And this, again, becomes more meaningful the more we work on it and the more we make decisions.
Okay.
Yep.
How's it?
Okay. Peggy?
I have no specific questions. I think it's just important to, number one, thank the people that worked on this because this was a huge project and to emphasize that it is a work in progress and will continue to be a work in progress going forward. The priorities may change, the funding sources may change, and if funding becomes available, we might want to reconsider the priorities. But I look forward as a member of CPAC to digging in with the committee once we start meeting later this month.
Yeah, I have to reiterate exactly what Peggy just said. This is a working document. It will become more meaningful the more we work on it and the more we make decisions. This is a beginning point, not an endpoint.
So my one, it actually addresses my one concern. I noticed that there's a fairly substantial sum coming in 2027, but as a working document having to go through CPAC, I shouldn't expect that entire value to show up in next year's budget?
No, absolutely not. So for instance, if you go to page, I believe it's 11, to, to your point, Mr. Chairman, we have 14,200,000 dollars of needs on the town side. And on the Board of Education side, we have 30,360,000. That includes a $20 million renovate is new for a total of 44,505,000. That is simply the universe of things that CPAC needs to drill down on, make some decisions, and you will see what we can afford, not necessarily what we need.
Thank you for the additional information.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. I believe there is a motion associated with this.
In order to send it to CPAC, there's a proposed motion on the front page of the September 10 memo.
Anybody? I'll move, consistent with the Town of Granby Charter, Chapter 10-2, Section D, the board hereby approves the attached Town of Granby Town and BOE 10-year capital plan and further to forward this plan to CPAC to allow that commission to begin their work.
Second?
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. And I think with the transmittal, the email supposed to go with that?
The...
The attachment to the email?
The, so I have forwarded, what the chairman is talking about is Ms. Susan Warner has sent along a email to First Selectman Fiorentino and myself. It's related to specific Cossett library capital requests that she had worked on, both as part of a grant and came up with a Excel spreadsheet. I have forwarded the original email and the spreadsheet to each of your Granby addresses. So you have it. She asked that we read it into the record for the purposes of this meeting. You have the whole document and Jen can reference it for the minutes. It is, there are many, many needs at Cossett, there's no question. And with this going to CPAC, they can then begin to assess them all holistically.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, next item would be the Town Manager's Project Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to spend a brief minute to let the community and the Board of Selectmen know a number of things that have happened since we last met. The town staff, Abby, Kirk, myself and Kevin have completed the preliminary review of super ordinances. And over the next several months, we'll be working with Mark to punch those up so that they're suitable for eventual action. We completed the annual edits and thank you to the Board of Selectmen for approving those at the last meeting to the town's personnel rules. Thank you to Betsy, Krista and Kimmy for helping on that. You saw tonight the completion of the consolidation of all department work plans. That gives us targets now to work on in the coming months. We, Kimmy, Betsy, myself and Krista have created a medical and other post-employment benefit analysis to proactively forecast fund changes as opposed to reactively. We did get great news in that our medical has recovered and we have a balance that's in excess of $1 million. So that's great news and Kimmy's tying up the loose ends on that. We added the draft term sheet on current school housing development, put that back in the developer's hands. We are months away from signing a, bringing a term sheet to you to consider ultimately signing it and/or approving it. And then eventually that will turn into a contract. It'll be some months after that before the contract comes before you. The police chief executed the school resource officer agreement with the Board of Education. The officer went to place in the schools. That's great news. You may have seen, but there was an RFP issued for the sale of freshies in the lot on Sider Lane. We had an inquiry from a resident up on Sider Lane as to why now we were selling it. I explained that we're looking at putting unproductive assets back into production. We completed the 10-year capital plan. Thank you again for your approval of that tonight. It'll be transmitted to CPAC. Kevin has tentatively set a date of October 6th for the next CPAC report. I don't recall if that's 5:00 or 5:30, but it's before the October 6th Board of Selectmen meeting. We completed the edits of the lease and use agreement and signed that so that Holcombe Farm can begin their work on 87 Sinsbury Road. And then finally, we continue to work through questions and edits on the upcoming agreements with Granby Ambulance, Granby Community TV and Lost Acres Fire Department. That's the update from me. And the second part of the update, I'll turn over to Kimmy and she can tell you a little bit about the August 2025 budget operations through the first 60 days.
Good evening. So in front of you, you should have the August 2025 budget operation report. And for the revenue, you look at the tax collections, we're at 56% collected, which is very consistent with the prior years. And the stiff rate is still competing to be around 4.4 percentage, 4.4%. We received $96,000 from the state for the motor vehicle reimbursement grant, which is due to the 32.46 new rate cap, put it on the motor vehicle new rates for the property tax purposes. So we already got that reimbursement, which is also budgeted for our FY 2026 budget. And on the expenditure, we are at 38%, we are at 35% from last year. And the public work and police department over time is also stated in the highlights, which is they are both lower than the prior year for now. And if you have any question for the page four to page seven of the budget operation summary, I'm here to answer your question. The last page is will be for the Auburn report. The total of the unspent Auburn fund is $25,000. So I'm very hopeful that we will spend it all before the December 31st, 2026 deadline.
So we'll start in the room first. Any questions on the report from the Town Manager or finances for Kimmy?
Nothing for me.
Nothing?
No, good, thank you.
I did not either. Mark, did you have any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for those updates. Takes care of the Town Manager's Report and the Budget Report. Next item on the agenda, First Selectmen Report. Mark, I'll turn the ball over to you.
Thank you, Mark. I don't have anything pressing for today. I'll catch up later next meeting with anything that I have. Thank you.
Very good. Selectmen Reports?
Nothing for me.
Thank you.
Nothing for me.
Fred? I hope everyone got a chance to go to Open Farm Day this past weekend, right?
I certainly did. It was a fun time.
Up at Lost Acres and then at Sweet Bee Farm. So it's, it's a tremendous event.
Yes, it is. Thanks to the Agricultural Commission for putting on that effort every year. We appreciate their hard work and for the farmers opening up their farms to the many visitors. Okay. Moving on to the next item, Public Session. Are there any members of the public in the room who would like to talk? And I would ask, as in addition, we've put a sign up sheet at the podium. So if you could include your information to help us have a complete set of minutes, that would be appreciated. Is there anybody who'd like to speak? Nobody in the room? Is there anybody online who would like to talk during public session? I don't see anybody indicating on Zoom that they need to talk or desire to. With that, I'll close Public Session. Is there a need for Executive Session, Mike?
There is not.
That brings us to Adjournment. Do you have a motion?
I'll move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting is closed. Thank you.